Okay, we will begin today's work session to kind of go over next year's budgets and questions, concerns and discussion. And I apologize, I've had a cold, so I sound weird, but I think you'll be able to understand me. So did everybody get the Form 4B that Chris passed around? Copy of that, Chris, I believe, do you want to start by going through this first?
The front page, I basically made a spreadsheet with a snapshot of the information from the 4B. Everything is in order, so all of your supporting documents behind are in order of our budget book. I put the page numbers on the side there. So basically, the requested budget, which I had to upload this to Gateway to get the Form 4B. So this is uploaded to Gateway. I have not hit submit yet, so that doesn't mean we can't make any changes as far as for our preliminary budget, but I have to hit submit on Friday.
So does it have the updated sheets that you got from the department heads that made some changes?
I did not print all those yet because I couldn't get everything printed. I was more focused on getting the spreadsheet done. I do have the updated, so we can kind of, but I didn't make copies for all of you.
I think you already gave us the updated sheets. I'm just saying it's the information that you're providing us here with the updated numbers.
Yes, yes, this is, this is the updated numbers. This is everything as of today with, because I got the reassessment numbers from Mindy. We changed the typo that I had on there for group insurance to 1.1 million. So this is basically a quick view by fund of the requested amount or the projected budget, preliminary budget, sorry, preliminary budget with revenue. I think what you guys need to start looking at too, I know that last week we were looking at total spent last year comparable to requested this year, but I think it's important for us to look at the estimated revenue, because even with our general fund, our estimated revenue for 2026 is significantly less in 2026 than it was in 2025.
Approximate number?
Oh, half a million.
Did you say that requested budget is without the?
We're right in, we're right under 7 million, and we're at 6.5 this year, estimated revenue.
Chris, did you say the requested budget is with the raises taken out? I mean, there's nothing there.
That's the, that's, this is the published, this is the absolute highest budget, so that is with everything. You guys have your starting point in your book without the raises, but this is what I have to publish in DLGF, and this is what you guys have to cut from.
Well, this is all the ask?
This is all the ask compared to the estimated revenue by fund, and so it gives you, of course, all the ones in red are the ones that are over budget based on revenue to expenditures or proposed. The ones that are in black, that's the amount that they have to play with, with their revenue. This is only taking revenue, any cash balances, I can tell you guys cash balances. I didn't want to give you too much or whatever you guys, I was just trying to not overwhelm. If you guys want me to add cash balances in there, but you really don't want to start diving into spending cash balances unless it's a one-time purchase or something like that. But any cash balances you need me to look at, you can. So as you can see, the top ones are fund by fund. The very bottom is the lit edit, which of course is based off of our edit plan. So that's that down there, because that is all together in one lump sum within DLGF, but yet we separate it out.
We can't change that, that's?
No, no, but I have to, that's included in there in the, the Form 4B. I do include records or recorders, record perpetuation, just so you guys can see that. It is not a budgeted fund, but I do include that in there. The only thing I don't include is grants. So this has got every fund other than grants.
Is it possible for you to run a report where you wouldn't have to go in every single one and make a spreadsheet? Could you pull a report out of there for all the cash balances for me, so just so we can have an overview?
I could do a planning of short form by fund, yeah.
I would like to ask if you, if you can do that.
As of what date, as of what date though? Do you want it as of today? Do you want it as of June 30th? Because on your Form 4B, you've got your June 30th cash balance. So your Form 4B, it takes each fund, so if you look at the general, it takes your June 30th ending cash balance plus your estimated revenue that you're going to be getting in 2025. So the remaining revenue you're going to receive between July 1 and December 31st. And then it takes your budget that you guys adopted last year and every penny in your budget that has not been spent. Okay, so the worst-case scenario, if that's not including any additionals, and I included the additionals that I knew about when I did this, but we might have other additionals in the next few months. So, and then it gives you your estimated December 31st, December 31 of 2025 cash balance. Then it takes your estimated revenue for 2026, and it's breaking that down by property tax levy, property tax cap, your miscellaneous. So then you get your total revenue for estimated revenue for 2026 minus your proposed budget and what your ending cash balance would be the end of December 31 of 2026. So DLGF doesn't, what I've learned is DLGF lets you guys set the budget however you choose to. If you want to spend every penny of your cash balance, you could. They're going to, the only thing they look at is do you have enough cash and revenue to support the budget that you're, you're adopting? They're not going to say, oh, you're out of balance or whatever. They're just looking at the black and white figures. Do you have cash to support that? Just like every time, every month I have to support our, submit our additional preparations to the Department of Local Government Finance, and they basically look to say, hey, do you have cash to support this additional funding? So they don't give really any guidance or anything, that's all up to you guys. So this is the information that they're looking at to approve your budget. Doesn't necessarily mean, you know, yeah. So that's why we really want to look, most of the time, look at the revenue, not spend more than your revenue unless it's a one-time purchase or something like that. So I'm trying to give you guys as much information as, as I possibly can for you guys.
Like this is showing that there'd be 1.272 million?
And that's if you spent the, yeah.
And then when I look at this spreadsheet, of course, it's showing that 1.7. But we don't have in there the revenue from remaining December, right? That's why that's off like that. So I'm saying?
What is it now?
The 2987 at the top of there is not included on?
That's not including, that's not, that's just your 2026, that's not, yeah, that's not taking your cash balances into consideration. That's just, that's just expenditures to revenue.
See, this first line here, first line here on the general, see it has a loss?
1.7 million.
When you look at this, you have a positive 1.2, it's because this 2.987 isn't included in that spreadsheet.
Because it's not, on the front spreadsheet, it's not considering cash balance. It's just concerning, considering your expenditures to your revenue, no cash, not using any cash balance. And that's typically what a balanced budget is, is not cutting into your cash reserve, your cash balance, not spending more than you're bringing in. So that's what we need to start looking at. I would recommend looking at first, which I think that's what you wanted.
Yeah, because I was looking back at previous years, and there were times where the revenue was, the budgeted amount is higher than the revenue, which eats into the cash, which, you know, sometimes if there's really large balances, it's okay, but I don't like it for reoccurring anything. You know, like you said, one-time expenses or whatever, that's probably. Or like one year, you set something and say this will only be for one year. To get us through something like where we're at right now.
The reserve should be a cushion that you can use occasionally, but then restore and bring yourself back into balance.
Yep, and we've worked really hard the last three years to build the recommended 25 to 35% of your estimated expenditures on reserve. The only funds that we do not have that in are, we didn't have that in, in 20, end of '25, was reassessment, which hopefully this year with not having that payment for EXOFT will help build that reserve, because there's just not, it's not a large fund. It's just, it's not, within one year, we should be able to get that 25%. Lit Public Safety is another one. We pretty much spend every penny we got or we get, and then PSAP. Those are the three right there that we, and we were right at 20, right at 25, right under 25 in general at the end of '25, I believe, is that right? Yeah. So I hope this information helps. Any other information? What did you, wanted the cash balances as of?
Well, I was thinking today, but if you, what was your point about it would be better maybe from June?
Well, you've already got June 30th, you've already got June 30th on there, so what I'll do is go ahead and do, I'll, each one. Yeah, we're doing, we're doing a claim docket for, for, for September 2nd. So I will do a, and we'll close that claim docket off tomorrow. So after I close that claim docket off, I'll do a cash balance report of each fund by September 3rd. As of September 3rd, which would get the last claim docket, that's the most accurate information I can give to you.
If you can do that, that would be appreciated. Just, I mean, I know it's on here, we can go through every single one, but when you see a overview of it?
It's on there, yeah, yeah. I can do that.
Anything to make it a little easier, less confusing or less paper.
And what I wanted to do for you guys is put each of these Form 4Bs in your binder, and I can, we can get that all together before the work session where you've got this, then you've got the request for general, and then you go to each one, so you don't have to fumble through these to look at these. So we'll get your guys' books in line, maybe if everybody wants to bring their book to Thursday's meeting, I'll have the hole puncher there. We can get everybody's book in line after the Thursday meeting, and everybody would have everything then to review and get going. So. And I'll have that cash balance printout for each of you as of September 30th.
You were saying our revenues are down about a half a million?
Last year, we were right under 7 million, we were at 6.9, and this year, we're at 6.5, 6.590, and that's because of the circuit breaker, the changes in legislation. I spoke with Baker Tilly, and you guys are more than welcome, I forwarded email to you, because I had, I asked Baker Tilly, you know, like, I know we're going to know, why, why are we down from 6.9, almost 7 million revenue in general fund to 6.5? And it's the circuit breaker. Actually, I think I've got the email, I printed it out. Let me see. Actually, I've got my computer right here. But I can forward that on to you guys, because I was asking the questions, just making sure, you know, because we get it, we get the estimated revenue and everything from the DLGF with the levy and the circuit breaker. And I wasn't expecting, I would, I guess I really wasn't expecting that much of an impact on general.
Yeah. Yeah, not including all the things we have to move around and shuffle out and accounts that went to zero that we've got to find places for, like inmate housing.
Yes.
And now the new thing, motor vehicle unrestricted, that's a huge number.
So I did talk with Steve since our last meeting, I spoke with Steve Howe, and I kind of explained to him, I was like, hey, I don't know if you watched the meeting, but you know, this is something we talked about and with the State Board of Accounts, and I'm really feeling, you know, this is what State Board of Accounts is recommending, it's going to be easier for us as far as that. And I think they were under the understanding that you could only move contracts to the restricted, and Marilyn was under that assumption that you can only lose contract, and so they wouldn't have enough contract to do that. But it's, if you can, if you're using supplies, culverts, anything like that for construction, restoration or preservation of a road, now you still have to document, you know, this amount of culverts is going to this road, this, you know, move all of your supplies and contracts to the restricted and all of your salaries and benefits. So they are on board with that now that I feel I've had that sit-down conversation with Steve. So the good thing is with, as far as your budget and your Form 4B, it combines restricted and unrestricted, as you guys can see. Because it's all one, because you get that 2 million, yeah. It's all, so you basically, just half of your funding goes to restricted, and the other half goes to unrestricted. So they have a grand total of 2,800, 2 billion, yeah, right under, yeah, 2,800, 809,000 of estimated revenue that should be split down the middle, restricted and unrestricted.
So when it says highway, that's where you're saying it's all?
So they budgeted over half a million over.
Yeah.
They should have known that, shouldn't they?
Did it have anything to do with the fact we're only going to get one hit with that one?
No, that's, that's a community crossings grid, so that's.
He did say that they did added equip, add equipment and stuff in there, so I think that inflated their request. But basically, you're looking at 1.4 for each. And him and I did have the conversation of, you know, what the State Board of Accounts recommended, that, you know, you should be using all of your restricted on roads and if, and doing that to that point, that.
So the plan is to dip into their cash balance?
I don't think we should budget that way, but if there's some type of need where there's a piece of equipment or something we need to discuss, we can always do an additional out of cash. I just don't like budgeting like that, because then it messes up what you're looking at next year in your budget book, and it looks.
If it's a one-time thing, or it's something to better.
Yeah.
Like the, I know I'm talking to the surveyors, you know, he wanted to do some cleanup, which I don't even think he's had the time to do that, because we haven't got that. So he asked for additional, you know, 15, wasn't it 15, additional $15,000. He had the cash to support it. It's not an ongoing thing, just a one-time thing. If you've got, you know, a repair, you know, I know that Steve was talking today that he's got to buy an excavator, you know, because the excavator went out. You know, to me, that would be, you know, but also a procurement plan for each of these things would be pretty nice too, to where you're not happened to.
Which we have asked RDL Solutions to, we provided them the information for all the assets for all the departments, and to help us work with a creative capital improvement plan for some of these larger purchases, because we have to do that. We're going to have to start looking at it that way instead of just thinking, oh, hopefully there's cash there, that's, that's not really appropriate. Kind of like we did with EMS, and we're going to do with the sheriff's department vehicle rotation, just go through all of the departments that have big expensive things, so.
Yeah.
This is not good. Does he might have anything that they want to talk about right offhand, or?
We're talking about it.
Okay, in particular, okay. I drafted down some things that we can start talking about if you want to. And we were on the highway department, so I was, made some notes here about like truck drivers and heavy equipment needs. I think that Steve had a couple, did you say a couple employees left? Maybe or something, and he's going to come ask for, to rehire them on Thursday or something, maybe a truck driver or?
I have no details. He just sent me that email, but I'm asking to add those on.
So we're not sure what positions those are, but I know that he's had some turnover with his truck drivers and things like that. And so I was just wondering if, you know, now's the time, instead of continuing to, you know, he has a hard time finding those, and then you have to have certain qualifications like CDL and maybe send them to school and all these different things, and then if they, if they leave, then you have to start over, unless you find someone with the experience. And I was just wondering if we can, you know, possibly consider outsourcing the hauling of the rock and versus continuing to hire truck drivers, things like that. Maybe bid it out, see what these trucking firms and, you know, what they would charge us to do stuff like that. I know he said that there's concerns for certain areas of the county, you can't get large trucks in, and, you know, but I think these trucking firms have different size trucks available, and it may be, you know, I have no idea. We don't know until we check, but I think we should definitely look into that to see if that's an option.
And we did talk during twice with this, one employee at Moers who expressed that, yes, that they would be able to and would be willing to bid for those type of services. So, so we, it would be something worth investigating for sure, to see if we can save at least the cost of an employee and save work, hopefully more than an employee, so.
Yeah, and then it's consistent, you know, that if you have somebody been out contracted, that they're going to show up, they're going to be there, we don't have to worry if they're off or they have vacation or, you know, whatever it is. So I just think it might, it might be helpful. We'll just have to see what the costs are, something to consider, and then. Go ahead.
I think it's especially critical that we get rock out to the gravel roads, especially in view of what we had this past winter, where the, in my opinion, the roads weren't rocked before the storms all hit, and then, then you know you're dealing with ice and everything, and it turns into a muddy mess. And frankly, some roads were hardly passable unless you had a pretty good four-wheel drive. So I think, you know, we do need to look at the trucking, plus probably Moers may have bigger trucks where they can go out. I've seen very few gravel roads that you cannot get triax along and deliver. And there are, there are gravel, there are contractors, including Moers, that have the capability in hauling this rock for, for driveways and farms and everything. I think that that's, that was a real, I think the roads are pretty decent overall right now, but last winter, it was to where, you know, could people really get out for work? Could they get to the store? Could they get out in case of emergencies? Can the school buses get through? Answers to most of, some of that was no. So I think, you know, we do really need to look at getting, getting those, that taken care of, whether it's through the existing department or through the contractors.
I don't disagree. And then I had on here also just plan for large equipment purchases, so again, just for the future. Maybe with the capital improvement plan, that'll help. I had, which we already addressed, motor vehicle highway restricted, no salaries, just for supplies and contracts, we really needed to, are they going to redo those pages and then give them to us? Is that what you think?
Yes, and that's why I was saying that we'll be okay as far as after the September 1st, because it's all, all combined. So we can have that to, you guys can have that to work on. So I will get with Steve tomorrow, and as soon as I can get those updated, get those to you guys. And at least have them for you before the department head meetings or the, then for the three minutes.
Chris, did you say that salaries and benefits will be paid out restricted?
No, salaries and benefits are out of unrestricted, all road, all, all road improvements for construction, reconstruction or personal rents are out of there. Those are the three requirements that have to be.
And then that way, I think we would be covered. If there's insurance leftover or salary leftover, it can be taken back in, right?
Correct.
Have it audit finding or anything.
Correct.
I did have an observation as I was going through the budget book, that there was, like you said, there was some new road equipment. I'm not sure what it is, and in all fairness to Steve, we haven't had time to ask him, because we have had those sessions where we talked to the department heads, but I did see that new road equipment was at 50,000, that I'd like to see a replacement plan. And then there was, one of the categories was 200,000 more for fuel and oil, and I didn't know if that got moved from somewhere or I didn't have a lot of time to look, so I'll ask him those things when he comes in. Local road and street, I noticed that the estimated revenue was 346, but the budget was 420. So that was another one that was eaten into the cash balance, so it looks like that has happened a few years. So I just want to get a handle on that, see what that's about. Surtax and wheel tax, the bytumis, not sure about this, again, it's, it's a little premature because we haven't had a chance to talk to him, but I noticed that it was 175,000 originally in the budget, and it was taken out of 25,000. So that was kind of extreme, and I didn't know.
And I did look up for the sur, wheel and tax, that can be used for road, for roads and streets. I mean, that's pretty much, it's a highway fund to be used, there's, it's undiscernible, so however.
So I just had a note here that I was going to talk to Steve Wy when he came in about that. And I noticed new road equipment was 50,000, it went up to 200,000, so basically that 150,000 just moved for bytumis to road equipment. Again, I don't know exactly what's needed, and it's, we'll find out whenever.
If you look, bytumis was increased in, I think, local road and street, is that right? If you look, there's just kind of some moving and shaking, and they'll know a lot.
It could be, yeah.
They'll know a lot of that.
Dive into it that deep, I just, these were just brief observations that I was telling you. And then, let's see here. One of the issues that I know that we've talked about with Steve is the, you know, working four days a week, and then the summertime, there's a lot of farmers, so there's a lot of people off, and it's summertimes when it's really busy. And we need to make sure we have, you know, whether we can get on a five-day rotation where certain people work certain days a week or something, to where not a whole bunch of people are off at once, you know, so. I just had that drafted down. I know we've had those conversations and.
Personnel.
Yeah, in the handbook meeting and stuff, so he was going to look into that. I just, I'm going to ask him for an update on it. I have here, so we have a lot of county vehicles between sheriff, EMA, EMS, highway, all types of big pieces of equipment that need oil changes, tires, brakes, you know, just regular maintenance things. And Corey brought up a good idea, so I drafted it down, about what would it look like if we contracted out like a part-time mechanic or something, just where, we're not just going here or there, or whoever can do it at this time, if we actually had a set of budgeted amount or something, I, I don't know what that would look like, but if we could.
Maintain all.
Yeah, to maintain all of that. We could do the oil changes that, you know, I don't know, would that save money? Would it not save money? If they got, if they were promised a larger scale of work, could it bring the cost down? I don't know.
Maybe turn things around quicker?
Yeah, something to think about. I did notice also, and there's some, there's some reasons for this, I know there's some moving and, and things, but in the sheriff's budget, it went from 901,000 to 1.22 million. There's a few things that got moved out of the lit edit.
Is that, is that just the general, or is that all of it together?
That, that's sheriff, that's just, I think I was just looking at the sheriff. I think it was just the.
Sheriff's Page 5 and 6.
Is that what it was? I didn't, I should have.
So, yeah, it was 901, I went to them. So that's just general, so a lot of that's probably moving and shaken from having to decrease the lit edit.
You have a lease payment in there, 240,000.
Well, that's true.
And the lease payment.
Because that was like a $320,000 increase, because what I was thinking is if you moved out the, I know we had around 133,000 too much in the lit edit for this year, so when we move that out, and then if we move out the 104,000, that was budgeted for this year in inmate housing, then we're going to have 239,000. So I didn't know, because that was a $320,000 increase, so.
With inflation, who knows? We'll have to go through.
I'm not sure. I mean, I just wanted to bring that up, and then maybe we can take a deeper look into that. Let's see, and then page 25. In the budget book I had. Yeah, the jail. So the jail, it looks like it was 649,000, is that right? Yeah, 649, and it's up to 934, so that's also an increase of 285,000. So those two together are over $600,000 in increases. So I realize there's the 240 for the lease, but then if you add in the 240, 130, what was it, 133, Chris, or in there?
133.
Yeah.
Looks like they added the taser contract in there too.
240, 133, and then 104, that's still only 477, and we're at 605 for those two, so. I don't know, we just need to really look and see, but that, that seems like a quality jump.
Utilities is moved from lit, they added 105,000, and meals moved from lit, 125, so there's 130 right there. And then they moved the taser contract, which is right under $10,000.
That's 230.
230, right, yeah, 230. 230, right, yeah, 230. And then the contract for tasers is right under 10. So that's 240 right there.
I mean, you can see where it all is.
Yeah, well, that ain't.
Yeah, but I mean, we just need to look at it and see, because there's multiple areas some of this comes out of. It, it just seemed like a big jump for those two.
Well, we don't have inmate housing anymore. So that, you're basically cutting, and then also there were a lot of things that we paid out of special legislation that I think got moved to lit local income, to the lit edit. And then the lit edit had needed to be decreased. So you've got that. So, yeah.
I just, these were just notes I had drawn down.
So if we look at what's in the lit edit, it's probably not going to be as much as this.
Yeah, let's look at that, the lit edit.
I didn't look at that.
271. That's on your sheet there.
Which, which page?
Hold on. So it went from 398 to.
271.
To 271. 398, 023, minus 271, 661. That's 126.3. But yet we've added, so then if you take, let's look at inmate housing.
That was 104.
That was 104.
That's what it was this year, right?
Uh, I can't, inmate housing was 109.
Oh, 109, okay.
And zero this year. So you've got the 120, am I thinking right? 126. So plus 109. So that's 235. Okay, so that's just the moves from inmate housing and lit edit. Then.
So that covers that.
So that's 235. And then.
Then where are these other increases besides the 240? That's a good one.
Um, let me think. I'm looking right quick. 860. 105,000. That's moving 10 there. I mean, I think it's just small add-ups here. I mean, you're going, I mean, the increase for fuel and oil just by a little bit. Here's in vehicle maintenance was 6,000, now it's 16,000. So that's another 10. That's not a move. That's just an increase.
We just need to look at those.
And then the lease payment from 17, budgeted 17,500 in 2025 to 240, that's not a move. That's just an increase. All right, there's, you know, 100, 256,000, just an increase, not, not a move. So.
I guess that was my point was.
Yeah.
The move was a small amount. The increases are.
Am I correct? Our move's only 235.
Moves were a lot.
From the move, the move was 235, yeah, from the inmate housing and the lit. And it.
Yeah.
The, the overall increase is 605. So we need to look at the difference there and dive into what that is. A big chunk of it, like David said, is that 240 vehicle lease. But it's still, there's still a lot of little things are adding up to a couple of, you know, a couple hundred thousand, yeah.
I'm really hoping, you know, I mean, just as a viewpoint looking, is when you guys sit down with the departments, is you go through each of these and be like, okay, we need to get this to, you know, here. You know, this is our goal. Where can we, and hopefully when you sit down and then that will simplify a lot of things for you guys for September 16th through the 18th to where we're not having to do so much of that.
Yeah. That's, that's the reason for today.
Absolutely.
Is just to have these conversations, not to blame the departments or to say, we don't know what this is or this is. We haven't even had a chance to ask them. So it's just to get these ideas out so you can drop down notes so that whenever they do come in, we can have those specific questions ready for them.
So that they can participate in the decrease.
And we're not just nodding our head, thank you for your presentation.
And, yeah, and then cut their throats and be like, really, we shouldn't.
Right. That's great.
With the inmate housing program essentially going away, hasn't Allen ever said that frees up bodies? Like those people by attrition? Has he ever mentioned it? I've never asked.
Well, actually with the census data.
I know a couple of, a couple of years ago, last year, added a deputy or two, wrote.
Yeah, the jailers. Now, the justification, I believe, a couple of years ago for the addition of two jailers, one was one year and another, I think we did another year. I might be wrong. But in two years, there were two new jailers. I thought it was because of the inmate population. It was so high. And I know it has come down and I know it fluctuates. So it's a little iffy. And I think we had a meeting and I, I asked Allen about this and I wasn't really super clear other than it fluctuates and it's hard to tell, you know.
But the numbers are significantly lower this year.
They are.
Than what they were.
And now he considers it to be adequately staffed, even though the census is lower. It's like, dang it, I would love to, to Fran to say we might have too many people and he didn't even approach the idea.
See, I don't remember what that, say, or that report that Ron shared in probably April, May. I'm sure it was addressed in there. I had to go back and look at it.
Yeah, maybe we can pull that up and see.
I'm sure it says more, but.
We should be getting another one of those this year. It's about this time.
Is it?
We did that last, last year.
I think they already did it this year.
They already did it. But we should be getting it about the new ones, shouldn't we?
In spring, I think.
No, I, I think we just got the one.
From last year.
Oh.
So I don't think it'll be until.
That's right. They just did it. We won't get the results till, I think.
Okay. Steve, I have anything else on that or? Um, EMA, I had, and actually Steve was in here a while ago. He confirmed that he and his assistant are going to be retiring at the end of the year, which congratulations to them, because that's what you work your whole life for and I'm happy for them. But the, the thing about that is with the dispatch, we're going to have the meeting next week with dispatch. We need to really look at what that looks like with the dispatch, you know, the EMA and dispatch and the duties. And, you know, because part of that salary, I think $10,000 is a 911 coordinator. Do we want to shift some duties? Do we, you know, what does that look like? And I, I can't really determine, is that council, is that commissioners or who's officially in charge of that job description? I know we have to approve it, but I think the commissioners have to approve it too, right? Or?
Job descriptions, yes.
Okay. You know, if that would change, because right now we're paying a certain percentage of assistant chief's salary. You know, like, I think it's like 75%. Is that something that we could shift some of those duties over into an EMA coordinator, coordinator position? I'm, I'm not sure.
Because the commissioners would have approved the operations, the job descriptions, personnel, all that. You guys are the purse strings. So then you would then control the funding of it. So it's kind of a joint effort to make sure that those two fit together.
So then we can, we can talk to the commissioners about that and even tell city whenever we have that meeting, what that looks like. And maybe they'd be happy to free up some time from their assistant chief or records coordinator or whoever, you know, just to see what that looks like if there's that capability. So I just wanted to bring that up for consideration. The clerk, I noticed that she had that part-time employee back that we did not fund through Charlie. When he came in and we said, you know, our budget's going to be tight. We need you to slim down and do more with less. And so it's back in the budget. And I think she put it in two places, one in general, one in the perpetuation, just to see where, probably just to see which one, you know, we would prefer that, in my opinion, that.
Take a note of that.
Yeah. Well, and, and we'll let her speak whenever she comes in, but I did notice that. So I wanted to make a note of it. Because we had already removed the part-time employee. And then I was going to say, what is the cash balance in this perpetuation fund? But you don't have to tell me now. You'll just run me that, right?
I'll run the report as of.
That perpetuation is treated the same way that the recorder's perpetuation fund is.
No. The recorder's perpetuation is a non-budgeted fund. They can add, they can spend that as they wish. Now, they have to, salaries and stuff, you guys have to okay out of that. The clerks is a budgeted fund, so you guys, so they're not the same. It's kind of weird because they're perpetuation, but same as the surveyor's perpetuation and all that. So the recorders is just, it's, it's its own separate thing. And it's hard for my black and white brain to, I have no clue. And that's one of those things.
It's in the statute.
Yeah. And it's hard for my black and white brain to wrap around because you think clerk's perpetuation, records perpetuation, surveyors perpetuation, you think, but they're completely different.
They're all connected with fees, is how they, is that's funded.
Yeah. The only thing you guys control out of.
Tracy, maybe you're very much aware of the, of the statute when we had conversation plus or art.
Yes.
Well, I, I think, do you have those handy, like in your office, those statutes for each one of those? Just so we can have them in our book? I think that'd be helpful.
Perpetuation statutes.
Full punch stat and have it underneath, you know, where these are, just so we can look at that as well. Because I'm wondering, once we see the cash balances there, if, if more of a salary can, at least for one year, one time, come out of there to get us through this really weird time. I think this is going to be the hardest budget year. This is the first initial one. So if there's a somewhat healthy cash reserve, if we can take an employee or so much of an employee or whatever in relief general and get it out of there, then.
You're looking at clerks right now.
And not to do it, you know, on a recurring basis, but just a one-time thing.
Clerk's perpetuation right now has 108,841.
Okay. So you'll run those for us, you said. It was just an idea. Um, health department, I did talk to Tara. Let me rephrase. I, she got hold of me and then I'm going to talk to her hopefully tomorrow. I had sent an email and asked for a breakdown, specific breakdowns of the categories within HFI. So I'm going to talk to her about it tomorrow and just see if we can get a little closer dive into what those things look like underneath there. And so I hope to speak with her tomorrow. And any information that she sends me, I'll ask that she sends to the whole council. I had down the corner, this is just a note that I observed, I think, last year. Let me, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I had wrote down last year that they had requested 38,000 in autopsy fees. But I think he came back for additional on top of that. If, I don't know if you can easily check that or not. But then this year, for, I mean, for next year, he's only budgeting 20,000. So I don't think that's unrealistic. I mean, I think that's unrealistic. I think we need to be closer to an average of what you really are.
Yes.
So.
So you want to know the additionals for, for autopsies in 2025?
Yeah.
What is the average? About $19,000 a year, I think I figured?
It, it always seems to go over that. Let's see. It looks like 24 was 27,000. Does this, does these, do these numbers?
So.
With additional or not?
What?
The numbers in here, like for 24.
Total spent, the total, total.
So that's additional and everything?
Yep. So you've got the total budget and you've got expend, total expended.
Yeah, okay.
So the total expended.
I was wrong.
23,000.
We did 44,000.
Yeah. Well, see, I mean, 25, this is through when, Chris, June?
2025 is through June.
We have 38,000 budgeted. We've already went past 20. We're half by June. That's really, I don't really want to take it down to 20. That's not really realistic.
If you guys remember when we first started, a lot of us started doing this in 23. That was one of the things that they basically just budgeted, they, they minimized.
It was like 5,000.
Yeah, they just did. And then. They kept it low. That's where they, which, that's something I've really had to adapt to coming from the private sector to the public sector, is because in the private sector, you want to budget every possible penny that you can. And that, that's ideally what you want to do. But in public sector, sector world, it's hard because of your.
You're trying to keep it at the maximum.
The max levy, yeah. So.
With the realistic.
Which is not realistic.
Which is not realistic. It's, it's just for black and white brains, it just doesn't make sense. So, you know, a lot of times the ones that are the Russian roulette, you know, the care of institution. I know we talked about this in 2023, the care of institution, the popper and all that stuff. You kind of just, those are, I know, you kind of lowball.
But I still think you got to take your history and look at your average and be as close as possible to that. Not just, well, let's just, we need 100,000, let's just cut it down to 100,000 and get all the additional later and worry about it later.
Right.
You know, it, it's really important to be, so I, I just have a note that I think that probably needs to be increased.
Yeah, because you can see the average in the past is, it's more than that.
That's very optimistic. Yeah.
Yeah. I would like it to be that, more or less, but.
Typically, you take the last three years and do an average. That's, that's what I recommend when they're trying to figure out if it's not a set thing, take the last three years and do an average. Uh, we did an autopsy, or 15,000 additional in June. 15,000 additional in June.
Hold on, recently?
June 26th.
Of this year.
Of this year.
Well, then how is this 25 expend only 19,000?
Because we might not, he might have.
It's extended, but not expanded.
We haven't paid it yet.
So we paid up to 38,000.
Okay. So he might have come and asked for the additional and knowing the bill was going to come, but as of June 30th, we hadn't paid it out. I can look real quick.
So you're telling me that we've already paid 38,000 and it's inside that way this year?
Here, hold on a second. Let me just look real quick.
We got some.
Easy peasy. It's easy peasy to look.
Request is.
Okay, so it's out of 1,000. What's the autopsy line item number? Does anybody know? What's the autopsy line?
I mean, I guess what I'm saying is if this 25 expend is through June 1st or whatever you said, it's 19,000 that you're saying? He's already done additional this year?
He did additional June 26th.
So how is it?
Okay, I understand what you're trying to ask.
We did 19, his whole budget is 38,000 this year. So.
The original budget was only 23. The original budget was 23. We expect, we paid 2,000 in February. Actually, we paid.
What do you, what do you mean 23? Because it says 38 here.
Because that's with the additional. The original adopted budget. Okay, so let's look here. 2020, let's go to the corner. Let me go here.
It's on seven.
Seven, okay.
I was under the assumption 2025 total budget is the adopted. Nope.
That's, I think I took the 2025. Where's the 25 adopted?
It's right here, 38,000.
So we just spent a little over half so far.
So the original.
No, it doesn't, something's not right.
That's with the total budget. Let me look at the adopted. That's not the adopted.
I mean, you know what I'm saying? Something's wrong here.
Our adopted. I think when we did your guys' spreadsheet, we took the adopted out and did the total as of June 30th.
So adopted plus additional appropriation.
Is what 25 total is?
Yes. As of June.
I'm thinking that the adopted, but it's not.
On 1-1, it shows the appropriation was 23,000. We expended 5,990 in February. We expended 37, 3750 in March, 6,040, another 195. And then in June, I mean, we, so we've expended, let me just go back to this. We've done additional appropriation of 15,000 on June 27th. And we had, so that brings the total budgeted for 2025 as of June 30th to 38,000. To date, he has expended 25,870, remaining unspent is 12,130. So that's what you've got.
Why are you doing additional if we?
Because he might have, he like, he, he, if he knows he's going to have autopsies in line, then he goes ahead and asks for the additional. And then where, when we get the invoice, we can pay it. Where we don't have to go into, which is exactly what you guys want. You don't want them to spend the money, then come and ask you for the thing, ask you for the budget.
He, he asked for a little more than that.
Yeah, I think he always cushions for one or two. And you can ask him, but I do believe in meetings. He said like he's, that'll allow me one and a half more autopsies for the, for the year.
He did, he did say that.
And he had made the comment to me that the, the person who does the autopsies gets paid by different counties. And whenever we call it, he comes because we pay him so quickly. We put a bunch of hassle. He doesn't have to wait 90 minutes.
A little bit of him, is what you're saying.
Yeah.
Which is what we try to do.
A lot of it though.
That's what we try to do.
He definitely say two or three, you know.
Yeah, that's what we try to do with the popper too. You guys remember a couple of years ago when we were, I was having attorneys calling my office left and right, asking when they were going to get paid. And I'm like, I can't until we get the appropriation from you guys to be able to pay them. So now we, when we get, now we, we, we appropriate as we get the refunds.
I mean, I'll talk to FEDD recently with all this going on.
I have. I'm sure there's more to come. So I know we had, yeah.
We did, remember we didn't go over.
These are the last ones we've had. They're more likely to struggle more based on the information.
More autopsies?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would assume.
So that's not.
So we have 12,000 left, but probably.
So 20,000 budgeting is not really.
No.
Nowhere near close.
Think we established that before we started.
The adopted in there, okay.
Maybe, maybe he's hoping for a small year.
That'd be great. That'd be great.
We were trying to get it as readable, this sheet right here. The more we put on it,
Yeah.
the, the smaller it gets. It's hard for you guys to read. So.
So I'm going to make a note in here that you have twenty-twenty-five total budget is through June first and it's all additional. Through June thirtieth with all additional so far. Twenty-twenty-five.
That's what's on the book.
Yes.
Okay, I just need to write that down.
Total budget. It looks like we removed the total adopted column.
Because I thought that was out.
Most of them are the same, yeah. Most of them are the same except for the ones that we had had to do additionals on.
With any additional. Okay. That's helpful. Because I was looking at it.
I apologize.
No matter how you look at it, it's at least thirty thousand on an average.
I would say yes, for the average, yeah. That's what I was thinking.
This year you're thirty-eight and maybe you're more this year. I don't know. Hopefully you are, but.
And then I had, the next thing, is everybody okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Animal welfare. I noticed that they went from a five thousand dollar request to a twenty-five thousand dollar request. And I think.
That's within the commissioner's budget, correct?
That's right, so.
Fifteen and sixteen.
Yep. I noticed that, I think there's a note on there. Thought, or maybe I heard him, Popper, or.
They asked for animal control.
Yeah, part-time control officer. And again, this is a fair, because they have a opinion, but I haven't seen a plan or details or anything. I know they're still working on that ordinance. It's been working on for almost a year or several months, so. I think that's what that's been. Next thing is Riverboat. I noticed, Chris, that there's five thousand extra for consulting. What is that?
Well, because honestly, I think it's easier if all the consulting is under, under my location where when I get it, I can pay it. We're having a situation where, you know, we're doing Wagner, Irwin and Shilly. We're all the consulting, Baker Tilly's prices, you know, all that, where it's just one lump consulting. Because a lot of it is consulting for the commissioners, consulting for you guys, when you guys email or call and ask questions and I. So just, just the increase of cost for consulting has went up. And we don't technically budget so much for Wagner, Irwin and Shilly. And I more so budget for Baker Tilly. But we've got to where we're using Wagner, Irwin and Shilly a lot more with Personnel Policy Committee. So that has increased our consulting.
Have we budgeted anywhere for audits? We always miss that.
Always miss that. We miss that. And I just do it as a fifty thousand out of general and we, I wanted to make sure we noted that this year. I forgot about it again this year.
That's, I mean, how much is that? That's a lot.
Oh, yeah, last year was seventy thousand, yeah.
Well, the ARP takes care of the federal, right? We still have money there to take care of that for one year.
Four year.
That's not the big one.
We typically just pay that as a, as a fifty thousand. Plus, you guys realize, we pay all of the schools, cities, towns upfront, and then I withhold it from their, their settlement, their tax settlement. So I've been trying real hard to kind of hold on to those and kind of do them simultaneously. But sometimes I can't because they're just too far off, too many months. And the State Board of Accounts will be down my neck breathing to get their money. But I try real hard. So we just typically pay all of the audits as a fifty thousand out of general, which I am not a fan of fifty thousands because that's a non-budgeted expense.
Do you have to get approval from the council for that, for non-budgeted? I mean, I, I thought you did. No.
Is this getting the cash though, isn't it?
No.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't. I kind of think I read something that said.
I only do fifty, personally, I only do fifty thousands for the audits. And I think, like, we're trying, in twenty twenty-five, we, I met with departments minimizing the fifty thousand on what they would be able to be used for. State called can be fifty thousand, state called meetings, like expenses for that. But I feel like we have a travel budget. So why should we, you know, if you've got money in your travel, then why are we using fifty thousand?
Either lower that or use that. We're not.
Yeah. So, you know, even now, we're getting ready to, got bids for the paving of that. I would like to appropriate that, not as a forty-eight, you know, you guys are going to talk about that on Thursday's meeting, but not as a fifty thousand, but as, use an account line and appropriate it and minimize. So we are not using, I typically, I cannot recall more than the audits that we're using.
Where's the company getting their funding?
Cash balance.
That's right.
But we get that much, we get on the audits, we get all of that back and it goes, I pulled it from their settlement.
No.
Not ours, not ours, no.
And ours is how much?
It comes out of cash balance.
But how much is it? Like the one we just had is.
I have no clue.
There's at least thirty thousand.
Oh, at least last year's was over.
And when I first got on this council, we didn't have to pay for those.
Huh?
When I first got on the council, we didn't pay for all.
Last year's was seventy thousand.
They used to be every two years, but now they're every year.
Now it's every year.
But we didn't pay for them.
Really?
No.
State changed it.
Yeah. When I worked at the school.
That's the way I understood it.
They changed it and then they made it more frequently.
Yeah.
When you're paying, so thanks a lot.
And the amount of time, you know, that it takes. Because you, we, in the auditor's office, I'm not trying, but we literally roll from AFR, the annual financial report, to audit, to budget, and it just makes the year go by so fast where you used to not have so much. And then also the consulting fees going up have made it to where, you know, trying to keep those fees down, doing as much as you can on your, on your own.
Yeah. That's what I was going to say.
Which is a lot of time.
That would be great, you know, because.
I'm trying the best that I can. I'm trying the best I can, but there's a lot of things that you really want that set of eyes going through, going, going through it, just like today with Baker Tilly. I've entered everything. I've done everything. Had them entered, to be honest, I'll say it honestly, I found mistakes on them, you know? I had to call them and be like, so they're just as humanly, human as I am, you know? So they changed things that I had and I'm like, so. But it's good to have that second set, but.
You said the, the consulting fee wasn't that because you're trying to get it all in the same bucket? That it get pulled from somewhere or you just think it's going to go?
Well, I think that we, we used to have consult, we never really had consulting in the councils, yeah. And the personnel policy and all that, like I said, Wagner, Irwin, Shilly, that, I always only budgeted for my financial needs within Baker, within Baker, with Baker Tilly. But now that we've got Wagner, Irwin, Shilly, that we're using a lot for for handbook and HR. We have to understand that we're not a big enough county that we don't have a HR director. You know, HR is run through the auditor's office. And so we have to use consulting on a lot of that stuff because we don't have anybody in the auditor's office that's trained on that. So every time I call or email Wake Wagner, Irwin, Shilly for a question, those are hours that we're billed for. Same way with Baker Tilly.
Are we also paying consulting for something to do with insurance to the, what was it? Was it something new that we started a few years ago? That we had consulting fees? What was that? I thought it was like a, it was a new was it a benefit or something?
Not a laser. Not the laser thing, right, that we pay for?
No.
You're talking about health insurance or liability insurance?
It was health insurance.
Oh, no. That would be through steel or?
Steel.
That would be, steel, that's.
That's, that's budgeted.
Steel's budgeted within my contracts.
Oh, is it?
Steel.
Yeah.
Okay, my next question is, what is that?
It's budgeted.
So what is that, Chris?
Steel benefits.
Yeah.
So there, there's a lot of things. This is one.
One year we did, we missed, we didn't add, or something we didn't allow for.
Yeah. So this is one of the things I remember in twenty twenty, end of twenty twenty-three, going into twenty twenty-four budget. I was like, what are, what do they do? Because what are we paying them seven hundred and fifty dollars or eight hundred dollars a month for? Because I really don't know. So sat down, talked to them, and there's a lot of educating. There's a lot of things behind the scenes that has to be done as far as with benefits and health and all that. They do our open enrollment and all that. So I learned what, what they did. They're kind of like our onboarding for, and they're our bridge between us and our broker, which now is USI. So like, we're working right now with them on, on open enrollment, trying to get all that in line. And then all those papers that have to be filed, Kelly Wogus would know a lot more of those terms than I do. But they're kind of the people for that.
So if you have, let's say you have a life insurance claim, does it go to steel or do you send it to Joe Franklin and?
Life insurance, no. Life insurance is through Standard.
I mean, I mean, does it go through steel in any way, shape or form? Is that what you're saying? They're like a mail person?
Yes.
And then they'll get it to the appropriate place?
Yes. They're a bridge between all of our.
An issue there.
Yes, we did.
Pay one out.
Yeah.
That's resolved though.
Yep. Hot tooth and nail on that one.
Yeah.
That's not a service that the timekeeping software will offer.
Not the one we got.
Do you get a cold? Sick.
Okay. So the next thing I have is popper attorney. I think, I know we've mentioned this before, but I think we need to have a serious conversation with the judge and the popper attorney board about what other counties do. I've talked to another county who hires a permanent popper attorney and then has a part-time popper attorney or maybe even a secretary. Those are costs that are consistent. And then the reimbursements are pretty consistent because you know what you've got and what claims you're going to turn in, instead of, we have multiple popper attorneys and, you know, there wouldn't be, and I don't want to accuse anybody of dragging things out, but there's no incentive to quickly quickly get the case taken care of on the outside. But if, if it was a county employee, I feel like it would be. You, you wouldn't have any incentive to drag it out. So then we could minimize the cost, we can have more consistent costs and be able to budget better, I think. So I would like to maybe have that conversation with the judge and the popper board to see what that looks like. There is a county, like I said, that told me that they do that and they started that and it's working well. And they're willing to give us their information, share anything that they have. I just think that's something we need to look at because.
Similar size, Ken?
I'm going to posit it. So I, I, I think so. It's, it's close. It's not like Marion County or anything, but.
Here today on popper, we have spent two hundred and fifty-two thousand.
Can you tell what reimbursements are coming in?
I can. Let me run a report real quick. Sorry.
Nope. Two hundred and fifty. And now we do have, this is another thing I wanted to mention, Chris, just because it's on the agenda. There's a request for fifty thousand additional. Is that coming out of general? I didn't look.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
But my question is, you're waiting on a reimbursement. So if, if the reimbursement comes in, is it going to go back to the general? To pay the general back? So you're not just wanting an additional?
So currently, right now, if I go to view balance by accounts, so let me look this up first. We have, we have spent every penny to date, right now, of reimbursement that we've received in popper. So we have received in a hundred and five, seven thirty-three, forty-nine. We've expended a hundred and five, seven three-three point forty-nine out of popper. We pay out of the popper first before we go to general. Okay? Out of general, we have budgeted two hundred thousand. We have spent a hundred and forty-seven thousand. So there's still right under fifty-three thousand left in there as far as appropriation. I did call the courts when I received this additional appropriation. It was like, okay, I'm kind of confused. Why are we asking for an additional when we still have funds available? Once again, they are estimating that they, they're going to need that fifty thousand to get through the rest of the year. That's your guys' decision on whether you want to, I mean, that's, so I'm just, I mean, you have the information. We should, okay, so we, I was going to run the report of winter last week. Let me pull this.
Do those come quarterly reimbursements?
Quarterly.
So we're going to get two.
We should be getting, yeah, two by the end of the year. So I hate to, I just hate to take from general if we don't have.
And all of our reimbursements go into the popper fund. And that's where we pay out first. If there's money in there, we pay out of that first. The only time we go to general is if there's none left. If we, if we have bills and we don't have any, any in that.
So right now we have fifty-three thousand left in general budgeted. And we should be getting two more quarterly reimbursements.
I'm trying to find.
So were those like fifty thousand at a time? If you, we had a heart and something, you said we spent a hundred?
She's, I think you're running that out, too.
Yeah.
See, it's just very inconsistent. And the reimbursement should be getting better now that July, as of July first, we are test counting to get reimbursement on certain misfeasance, so.
Yes. And does that go, that went into if that July one, so we should see that with our September reimbursement.
Assuming they're turning those in. I'm sure Kim does it.
Kim does, yeah. Two, three, two.
So hopefully we'll see an increase.
Next. Okay. So we received a reimbursement in April of seventy-nine thousand, one ninety-nine oh two. We received a reimbursement in July of twenty-six, four nine four point twenty-three.
Big difference there, isn't it?
I'm not seeing that.
So we'll get it in October.
So we'll get it in October.
October, then begin January.
In January, yeah.
Yep. So there's no, it's kind of, there's no way for me to say how much it's going to be. I'm sure if I called Kim tomorrow, I could pull, find out how much the request was for a payment in October and send that to you guys.
Oh, yeah. Okay. That'd be helpful. Because if it's significant and we think we're going to get that in October, then fifty-three thousand plus the October.
Thank you.
We may, yeah, we may not need additional. Maybe we just wait on sliding another fifty thousand out of general and go there and only do it if we have to in December or closer, you know, closer to whatever the deadline is for additional appropriation. But that's kind of off subject, but.
What was the reasoning for not having one in January of twenty-five?
Let me look and see if we got one. We should have got one in January, but I'm not, the first deposit I'm seeing.
Oh, well, now it probably went into general then. When did we start that?
No, because we started this last year. Let me see if we got one in this, no, I don't know. Maybe they combined them in April. I'll have to get with Kim, so I'll get, I'll get all the.
Check that, yep.
Yeah, since it's seventy-nine thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's up to forty percent. I did have a question, moving on to the recorder, that I'll ask her about the part-time position. How many hours was that budgeted at? It looked, if I'd be right, I just, it looked a little weird, but. Well, I guess that was full time and then she left. I don't know when she left. I was just going to ask her that. I had a note. Election board, it looks like their budget went from twenty-five thousand for this year to eighty-three thousand. Pretty significant. Audit system support, four thousand three hundred to twenty thousand four hundred. I don't know what that is, but we'll ask.
Is that for those new budgets, you think?
Well, if it's, I, I'm not sure. We'll ask Ms. Joan, but if it is, I thought, he said we didn't have to have those this year.
Yeah, that's what it's for. We can probably push that off.
I thought he said like in the next few years, we're going to have to start working towards that. So I don't wish. We'll see what she says. And then software maintenance has an increase of two thousand.
I know what it is. Sorry. We're going back to the popper. Okay, so.
Sorry.
When I'm looking in here, it looks like the receipt, I'm going by appropriation. I was looking, doing appropriation. It looks like that seventy-nine thousand, one ninety-nine oh two is our reimbursement from January and April that we appropriated. So I wasn't going by deposits. I was going by appropriation, looking at the appropriation report. So January and April is us when you, we appropriated the reimbursement from January and. is us when you, we appropriated the reimbursement from January and April. So those are two reimbursements. So that makes sense why that one's so much more.
Can you please, I expect like thirty thousand?
Yeah, sounds like it.
Plus the fifty-three we have, so eight hundred and eighty. It's gonna, it'll be close. I don't, I don't know.
Sorry, I didn't mean.
That's okay. I don't know about these fifty, but we can talk about that Thursday. I'll look at it closer. So back to the election board. They also have salaries. This year, we cut the salary in half for the election board members from seventy-five hundred to thirty-seven fifty because there was no big election. This is what was off years. Next year they have a, you know, pretty good-sized election.
The only difference I see in this is the voting system support. It's basically.
Well, it has to be something else because it's pretty significant.
What page are you?
Eighty-three thousand, twenty-five thousand to eighty-three. So like fifty-seven thousand or an increase. Election Board is what page, David?
What's the absent voted board member?
Fourteen.
Fourteen, thank you, yep. Eighteen fourteen. What'd you say? Absentee?
Yeah, see, there's a, it's, it's in your.
Is that early voting?
Absent voter board member, sixteen thousand.
I don't know.
Last year it was nothing in there. But in twenty-four, we had sixteen thousand. So it's got somebody with a general election in it.
Yeah.
That's probably absentee voter work, or the workers, because absentee, because we didn't have it this year. We, we didn't have it.
Is that, is that early voting? I don't know. We need to run that down now.
Then you got thirteen thousand, eighteen precinct board members. Had nothing this year because we didn't have an election.
I bet that, early voting workers.
Last year you had thirteen, seventeen. So yeah, it's going back to what it was in there twenty-four.
Okay.
On that, on the top, so it's only, the real difference is that voting support, system support.
And I think they had to do, I'm just, what I've heard, they've had to do updates to that micro.
Post it up a little bit.
It's quite a bit though.
It is a lot.
We'll, we'll find out from Ms. Joan when she comes in. I have a note to ask. And then I did notice that, I don't really know, I, I was just gonna ask her what this meal is in, sixteen hundred and fifty dollars. You know, twenty-three, it's three hundred and seventy-five.
We had the same thing in twenty-four. It's meals for people who work the polls, I guess.
They don't bring their lunch? I mean, I don't know.
I don't think so.
So we cater it or what?
They have in the past. I don't, I don't, they still do that or not, but.
I mean, it just seems like a lot, but maybe not.
I think you need to go back and look at what it was on a comparable election year.
That's what you do here.
Yeah, for twenty-four, yeah. So that, if it's comparable to twenty-four.
It is.
Yeah, okay.
Other, other than the twenty thousand four hundred, and then a couple of other things that are up.
Yeah, you can't compare twenty twenty-five to twenty twenty-six. You gotta really compare twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, but when I looked at twenty-three, it was three seventy-five. That's a huge difference, so I didn't know.
No election.
Twenty-three? There's city elections.
City, so.
We're not as many workers, but that's why.
But we get reimbursed for city though.
We don't?
We do.
Oh, we do. We get reimbursed for city if we didn't have a county. But we don't budget that much?
Yeah.
You would still budget it.
Yeah, you budgeted for it.
But I mean, they only budgeted three seventy-five, so it's weird.
I mean, there's not much going on election-wise. They didn't beat.
In the cities? There are a lot of races.
Twenty-three.
I don't know. We, we can ask Ms. Joan. I just have a note here. Solid waste. Can you tell me about that? Because I talked to Randy today and this, twenty-five, we budgeted two seventy-two and twenty-six, it says three ninety-three, but he said it should, he doesn't want any more from the county than two seventy-two, but they'll have revenue that they'll need to be appropriated. So is that what you added in there or what?
I didn't do the solid waste budget. Wes Terry did.
Okay.
Okay, so here's where it's confusing.
Yep.
Okay, because, okay, so if we were running the solid waste, if the county was doing the bookkeeping for solid waste and having the money in the county, then there would be a solid waste revenue fund.
Yep.
Okay, so then you guys would budget expenses out of the solid waste revenue fund and if you were going to support the solid waste with funding out of general. So it's kind of like you're paying. Right now we don't have, the county is not, does not have the solid waste revenue fund. So it was really, so you guys are only budgeting the general. So if they're asking for two seventy-two,
Yep.
then that's what you guys would budget, okay? Then, once they get to where they want to, but they still have to ask your guys' permission, so you guys have to appropriate for them to spend the solid waste revenue. It's gonna be a lot easier when it's all within the county. But this transition has been where Wes Terry was taking care of it before, rather than, you know, make it even muddier than what it was. I've already been told that that is something that the State Board of Accounts is going to discuss with us in twenty twenty-five. Because we should be containing our own funds. There wasn't any discussion of it this year because they were auditing twenty twenty-four. So that's something from twenty twenty-five, but, so that's probably something where, just like anything else, if you know you're kind, they want something. So I don't know. Of course, that's, so it's, it's hard because, I mean, you know, I, I won't say it's hard, but the communication line has to be open between myself, the auditor's office and Wes Terry. I would like a clearer picture than what we have right now, because right now, the county is cutting a check to the solid waste each month. Plus, we're paying payroll. So trying to keep track, you know, and we're at the point, here it is August, where we're running, we're running.
You're running out of your budget.
We've run out of the appropriations. So what we're doing is, in a sense, running our payroll account lines negative and then billing the solid, billing the solid waste revenue fund to replace the general now.
So they don't have to ask for an additional, like, we, they don't have to ask us to, okay.
Yes, they're gonna have to.
That's coming.
Yes, that's coming. We have it, so that's why I'm saying, we're running the payroll account lines negative because there's no appropriation left.
But they have revenue to support.
But they have revenue to support it.
So sales of trash tags and recyclables should be in here.
Yes, but it's not right now. It's, it, it, it's, it's fine. We're, we're getting it. The, the money's there. It's just you have to look at, they're two different things right now. You've got what the general's paying, which is out of the general, then you've got the revenue. But that revenue is not controlled by the county, it's not in the county's books right now. It's outside.
Sales of trash tags and recyclables should probably make a difference.
Correct.
I think.
But I think, if you can ask Wes or confirm with him that we really only need the two seventy-two. I know the ask is three ninety-three, but I think the difference is their revenue. If we know that, we can just cut that right away, which is from when I talked to Randy today.
That's what I've been told.
Okay. But just confirm it, if you don't mind, because I don't want to cut that and like find out.
But what I am also recommending to make it easier, eventually, if we get to where, I mean, that's not what I say. That's the commissioners, they're running their, you know, if, I, but I am assuming the plan is to eventually move everything to the county, which is what it should, what, what. Yes.
I agree.
But the intention was to not dump everything. It, it was to make a smooth transaction, transition. It wasn't about that.
So when State Board of Accounts asks this year, that will be the explanation that this is doing that. Yeah, so, but I, I do want to point out that the total ask, assuming this is correct, is the three ninety-three is much less than the five hundred and something that was originally taking to run the solid waste operation. So they have found a lot of efficiencies by bringing it on to the county and reducing costs and.
But it is still a cost to the county. The county is still paying for it.
They are still, I mean, it has significantly came down, the overall cost, because it was five hundred and forty-something and it's now three ninety-three.
Yeah, like a third.
Yeah, I mean, that's, and they're still working on more. I know that they're wanting more compacters at certain places to help reduce the trips and so.
I do understand, but we do have to understand that that is an expense that the county general fund took on in twenty twenty-five.
That's, that's correct. We did, and we stopped billing the people the extra expense, so.
It was billed by, oh, it's paid through.
It's just paying it out of a different pot.
Well, it was in addition to. It wasn't, I mean, we already were collecting these taxes, plus we were charging the people another fee, bringing in the forty-dollar. I think there's good news to celebrate, that the costs are significantly down, like you said, close to a third. And so I thank the commissioners for all the work.
Yeah, absolutely. In talking with Wes, the, the, the thing we are running it, gonna run into is, you know, the county's paid the two seventy-two this year. And so basically, pay, you know, we've helped operate the first front of the year, the first part of twenty twenty-five. So then to basically allow solid waste to build up revenue. What Wes has informed me is that if we don't do if we spend the solid waste revenue in twenty twenty-five, we're actually, then we're gonna be, it's, it's not to the point where it's gonna be able to be fully funded. We will have to start, they'll basically bring them down to where the, to the, to the baseline, to where we will have to, you know, start the beginning of twenty twenty-six, doing the same, paying the two seventy-two. It's not to the point to where we, the county doesn't have to, it's fund the two seventy-two.
No.
So you can't cut the two seventy-two.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm just saying, in the book it shows three ninety-three, but really it's, I believe, and I want you to confirm.
Yep.
It's really two seventy-two. So that's, that's an automatic reduction of, you know, hundred, ten thousand dollars. Or a hundred and twenty thousand.
So ask the solid waste.
I mean, that's good. That's helpful, you know, we wanna go in that direction.
Revenues, do we know? Their estimated revenues, do we know?
I don't have that.
I think we know now.
If, if you can get that from the.
So solid waste, just confirm that the county portion they're asking for is two hundred and seventy-two thousand. And then their estimated revenue for twenty-five and twenty-six.
Yeah, and it will make up the difference for the three ninety-three. That's it, yeah. If you can confirm that, I, I spoke, like I said, with Commissioner Cole today and he was under that impression as well, because I said, why, why did you, why are you asking for more? From the county, he was like, oh, no, that's not.
They have eight months.
Yeah.
So he should be able to come up with that.
Sure. He said, we're not asking for more. It's just looks like that because this isn't right, how it's set up, so. Okay, the next one is page twenty-two. I have the circuit court. It's like a, like a fifty five thousand dollar increase, popper attorney, fifty thousand dollar increase, again. We don't know. That's one of those. There's really no way to budget. That's why I think we need to have possibly look at what, just look at the whole scenario, what the expense would be to bring someone on full-time and maybe have a part-time.
Two hundred thousand should be pretty good.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and then maybe even a part-timer or secretary or someone to help them. And then if you had to contract out small things like misdemeanors or something, you know, we just need to look at it. That way we can, we, we know, because right now, we have no idea. Like you said, we've already paid out what, two hundred and seventy-two thousand, two fifty-two? Oh, two, two fifty-two year today. I mean, that's a lot. Like, we only budgeted two hundred.
Not as much as we paid out in twenty-three.
Well, I know, yeah. Yeah, twenty-three was five hundred and eleven thousand. I don't think people realize that. I don't think a lot of people in the public realize we have to pay for that, first of all. How costly it is.
Yes.
I mean, two thousand twenty-three, five hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars, over half a million dollars to popper attorney fees that we have no control over.
Oh, that's you said, though. There's no incentive to speed things along.
Right, with, yeah.
Discontinue it.
Yeah.
And that's what made up a lot of that five eleven was. But.
Well, that's true.
I wonder what, I wonder what a salary would be for a popper attorney.
I, when I talked to the other county and then a few other people, they were saying somewhere close to what the prosecutor judge makes would be, which would get you someone who could move things along, that would, you know, that's what they thought it would take, so.
We do have a.
Which is around a hundred and ninety thousand. But then you need an assistant or something.
Yeah. Let's, let's bring in the four-year. The four-year averages, two fifty-eight.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Two hundred and fifty-eight, okay, so. You can't really argue too hard with budgeted requests there. Again, you'd like to be able to.
Yeah.
Are you taking the three-year average?
The four-year average.
Four-year average.
We paid out a general.
Oh, wait a minute, I might add.
See, that's only the one.
That's only general. That's not just, that's the popper.
Yeah, we're paying all the reimbursements also.
Budget of two places.
Yeah. Because you've got the popper.
It's pretty high. Yeah, three, three fifty-four, something like that.
I bet your own, your own popper would be cheaper probably.
I just think if you would, I thought.
It'd be easier to budget.
Yeah.
You'd know what you got. You know, it's.
Yeah, and then if you get somebody who's not moving things along, you have control to say, hey.
I'd say for three hundred thou, three hundred thousand, you could get.
They wouldn't be on our interest, would they?
Well, yeah, they'd be a full-time employee, I think.
Probably have.
Yeah, but those are also things that you get reimbursed for, I believe. It's part of that, up to forty percent of your cost.
Yeah.
I think so, forty percent of your cost. I think it's, we can ask him, but I think, it's my understanding that it's forty, up to forty percent of all your costs. So the misdemeanors might be a little bit less, but.
Which will cover your benefits and your payroll taxes, I guess.
Yeah, so I don't know. It's just.
I don't know.
There's some, there's a couple larger salary increases in here, and I don't know, I'm assuming it's probably either the minimum's moved up, the recommended moved up, something like that, but I was wondering if we could talk to the judge about maybe even one time, maybe a couple of those larger salaries over, all from Saps, because what's the cash balance at Saps? With the understanding that this is not a reoccurring thing, their whole salary is not going to every year come out of Saps, because I know they worry about that, because what if that fund depletes and then you know, we've spent the money somewhere else, that, you know, that was never my intention, so. I think it was like six hundred thousand or something crazy. The last time I checked.
Six hundred and thirteen thousand, six hundred and fifteen. Six thirteen.
I was just thinking if the judge would consider taking a couple of these larger salaries one time, one year.
Especially this year.
Completely out of Saps, that would be helpful.
Help us get on this.
To, to get over this hub from twenty-six, because this is anticipated to be the worst year. It is going to get better from there.
Year to date, or in twenty twenty-five, they've, in Saps, they've received it in, it's pretty much ninety-four thousand and expended out eighty-four. So they've brought in more than what they've expended, so the cash balance is growing.
So that's just something I had down. Maybe whenever she comes to talk about her budget, if we could have that conversation. Perpetual funds, what salaries can partially or fully be funded from perpetual fund, relieving the general, especially with the cash balances, again, one time.
Any perpetual fund?
Yeah, I mean, you know, take a look at each one, just one time to see what portion of the salary or if a larger portion of the salary, up to the whole portion of the salary for one year, with the understanding it goes back after that, but to help us get over this five hundred thousand dollar deficit. Is that what she said?
Well, we're, we're bringing in five hundred, approximately five hundred, our revenue's down by five thousand, but. Five hundred thousand.
But the overall.
But you've got a lot, yeah, you've got a lot.
Closer to two million, yeah. The next thing I have is commissioners. I did notice that Ride Solutions is back. We had not funded them for two years. They were asking for six thousand. I have my own personal thoughts on that. Nothing against Ride Solutions. I think they offer a great service. My issue is, we have Marksman Cab and I feel like we're competing with them. And if we're subsidizing Ride Solutions, rides to get their costs and their rights down, we should be doing the same for our small business that's paying the taxes, the full taxes to this county, and I don't think that's fair, so that's just my opinion.
I agree.
I don't want to cut this throat to the people that are trying to survive here and are helping us make this community go around, so that, that's, again, just my opinion, but.
Ride Solutions, though, are contracted from state, right?
They are. I think they get money from state, federal, but they also need local.
Dispatch from.
Yeah.
Southwest.
They provide a wonderful service. It's nothing against them. I think that they have low-cost rides for people who need to go to appointments or wherever they need to go, grocery store, to get to and from. I, I did hear at the city meeting, because I, I believe the city and Mopaca helped fund them for the six thousand this year, maybe even last year. And, you know, one of the things that I heard was something about, there's several. And, you know, one of the things that I heard was something about there's several people, maybe from the factory that, from Mopaca, that use that to get to work, which I'm glad that that's an option there, but, you know, they're, they're being paid a wage also, so.
For a good wage.
I don't know. That was just, I just don't want to hurt our small business and compete with them, so. Employee, county employee training, two thousand dollar revenue, six thousand dollar request.
What would be on?
I just moved to county employee training.
Which, where we at?
I, I just had notes, I'm sorry.
Fifty-two?
Page fifty-two.
Yeah. These are just things I wrote down. Actually, Tori wrote, wrote these down, so. Or he helped me put them in some type of order.
I'm talking about the estimated revenues, two thousand?
Yeah, we did it, six thousand dollars, that's a lot.
This is the fund that the reporter controls, she controls this budget. Let me see what the fund balance is, twelve seventeen.
I mean, it seems like a lot. Didn't you say they pulled state call, I mean.
This is what we can, we can pay state call, that's why I, so, the way I understood it, I understand things, is if you do not have a travel budget, and you are required to go to state call meetings, so if your county does not give you money for travel, then state-called meetings, you can use the account line, fifty thousand. We have budgeted travel for, this is for the county-elected officials' trainings here, plus you guys also budget out of general. So this is, basically what I understand is that this is fee-based, and this, this account right here, a portion of the fees is used for training.
And there's also travel and stuff within the individual budget, so it just seems like a lot. I think we need to really figure out, and I don't want to discourage anybody from getting training, but I think we need to figure out what's most important, especially this next year. State called, obviously, is very important. And if we, you know, can cut down on some of that, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I know personally, you know, being on the Auditors Association, yeah. They pay for mine. It has freed up for me to be able to send my girl, my staff, my coworkers, I hate to call my staff, to mapping training. Mapping is constantly changing, and so that's something. Tax sales, tax sale is something that is ever-changing and learning up. So I've used, since I don't have, county doesn't have to pay for a lot of my training expenses because of being on the association, and I know other elected officials, I know Amanda Lashers on her association as well. It's freed up for me to be able to have staff go to training with tax sale and mapping, and also allow them to go with me, because there's a lot of times that, you know, there's things that they necessarily, it's more for them, certain training stuff, so.
You know, we're budgeting this fifteen hundred every year, but we're only expending about half of. If you look, it's three thousand, you know, three thousand.
And that's maybe something we should talk about, because, you know, we pay claims based off of how we receive it. So maybe that's something that needs to be, be communicated to the department heads, that you need to expend this money first before you do your general, you know, that's something, that's not something that the auditor's office polices. If they, if they have appropriation in general and they submit it, that's what we do, but we can definitely.
Can we just cut those down out of general, force this, and then if there's an additional, they can come ask if they need more. I would rather that, really.
Absolutely, you can do whatever you, as a group, choose, yes.
This special training, that's only for our training, it's not like going to, like Huntingford, where we go to the, that wouldn't be considered training.
AIC.
Like when we have to go French Lick coming up, what's, where's that coming from?
You can pay that out of your general travel, that's not state called, so.
So this is only state called?
Actually, I don't, this is county-elected official training, so this is any training for a county-elected official. So like, I can't pay for, I can't pay for my coworkers out of here. I can only pay for me out of here. So when I go to the AIC events, so it's not just state called, it's.
And when you get yours paid for, do you pay it in reverse, or you, they just pay it, you don't pay at all?
For anything that I'm required to be there on behalf of the Auditors Association, so my auditors conferences that I go to, I bill, the county pays for nothing. That's part of basically the reward for the time, because.
So we don't pay your travel, we don't pay your mileage, we don't pay your meals, your hotel.
Not for Auditors Association. If I am there based on Auditors Association, for Auditors Association work, then the Auditors Association pays for it. If I'm there on behalf of the county, or I'm not doing work for the Auditors Association, then. Then not so much.
Because you're a seat holder.
So like AIC, going to AIC and French Lick, I'm not there on behalf of the Auditors Association, I'm there as a county. So basically, my Auditors Association, and then the Auditors Association goes to commissioners because we work so closely with the commissioners and also council, which I didn't go this year, but anyway.
I don't know exactly what the mileage is, but I did want to bring this up, because it's just a way to, I'm sorry, I meant like the distance, for you to stay at a hotel. Because I feel like, and this is just me, but I feel like the French Licks and the Evansfields, we could drive back to Coors and Carpool if there's a bunch of us, instead of staying, you know, two, three hundred dollars a night, a whole bunch of us, you know, whatever, I, I don't really like that. And I know, but I think that the current handbook allows it because it's like fifty miles, and it's like fifty-two or fifty-five.
It's right on the line.
Either way, and I think that needs to be changed, because I just think we need to be, you know, try to save where we can, because the more we can save, the more we have things, like increases in salary, things like that, so. Probably not for this conversation, not for the handbook, so I just thought that was a way to save money. The next thing is, I have is health insurance. Brad and I, Chris, both Randy said at a meeting with USI Insurance, Jim Franklin and.
Shaniqua.
Shaniqua, yeah. And we talked about different ways to absorb the increase, you know, the seven to ten percent increase we're anticipating getting. And we are, we have asked them to get quotes for increasing the deductible from a thousand to two thousand, just to see what that would, the savings would be. And then looking at a working spouse rule, and then potentially increasing the max out-of-pocket an additional thousand. We believe there's room there, potential there, to absorb the entire increase without having to add premium increases on the employee or additional costs to the county, so we don't have those numbers yet, but they seem fairly confident. I think that with those three things, we could get there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Without putting any extra costs, like I said, on the premiums of employees and on the county, so. I think that's probably a good option, but again, nothing's been decided, so nobody get excited. We're just looking at the, see what we can do. And the next thing I have is dispatch. Chris sent out an email, and then I sent you guys a text asking who can do nine-three or nine-four. I know this isn't budget, but it kind of is a part of that.
Yeah, because I need to email back, that's one thing I was going to ask, because I actually, I was, I actually got information from the city today that I was, had an email drafted to forward on to you guys, but I wanted to be able to say, hey, this is what we're going to talk about with the city, because basically I got their request. So I was waiting to see, I know that Kelly had asked me to get with Steve Hauser.
Yeah.
And he's available on the third and not the fourth. And then also this room, it's going to be easier for us on the third, because this room is rented by the health, or reserved by the health board on the fourth. So if we needed the fourth, we will definitely, you know, supersede that, but then their meeting won't be livestreamed, it'll be somewhere else. So if the third works for everybody, that would be the preferable day.
Have you heard from the commissioners at all?
I have not.
I think it's important that they're there, because they're a huge part of this equation with, they're the first line, which is the contract. What does this look like going forward?
That's on Wednesday, the third.
Wednesday, yeah. I tested.
I think they need to be there, so. Because we're just the funding part. We need to know what their expectation is, what Tell City's expectation is. Do they want to continue the service? Do they not want to continue the service? Are parts of it moving, since we have an opportunity to potentially change their job descriptions with the change in EMA? You know, there's just a lot of things we need to discuss, and we need the commissioners there, so.
I'm going to text out.
So I'll let you know when everybody.
Okay, and Alex said I've got the email drafted, sitting right here. I guess I'll just go ahead and forward that on to you guys right now. Just know that, let me just go ahead.
What did you say, their request?
They sent me.
You mean the request for the dates?
I emailed them, you know, asking for their expense, you know, what their, what their plans for cost for.
Oh, for the future, oh, okay, okay.
And I got an email, which, I had sent that email. So let me see. See below. So I have emailed.
We're almost done, sorry.
I emailed last Friday. And put a response to this, I'll send that to you guys.
My rambling. Okay, and then department head discussions, I think we need to go ahead and pick those dates, when we want them to have the fifteen to twenty-minute time slots for them to come in. Again, I asked that everybody really go through each one of these sheets, and if you have to put a piece of notebook paper in there, write down all your questions. We really need to get as much as possible out during those, instead of, you know, before I feel like we just listened and said, thank you, next, you know. And it's just a lot, it's, so the more we can ask them and understand at that point, the easier these budget sessions are going to be, I think, or the smoother they're going to be. So what dates can everybody? Is there something on September eleventh?
September eleventh, you guys have the first reading. I, and then we will also, I sent you guys the levy and circuit breaker, basically, that I got today. That will be on September eleventh, and then your private entities will bring you basically the request that I got that your, the Perry County Council of Aging, all them. We basically, last year was the first year we divided up, because it was such a long, it's too much to do the departments and the entities in one night. So we kind of break that up. So that's Thursday, the eleventh, so.
Thursday, the eleventh, is when they're heading?
Yes, your public hearing.
Outside departments, yeah.
And that's when you'll have the reading of the preliminary budget of what's been submitted to the LGF for the public.
David, you may have to help me through that, because I don't want to mess that up.
Yes, in the airport.
Okay. So if everybody can just look at dates, and then maybe I'll send out an email, or Chris can send out an email, we can rely on all, or do you have an idea?
Well, I didn't know how you guys felt, I mean, you guys have got possibly the third next week. I don't know if you wanted to split it up and do one at the department head meetings on the fourth, where you'd have the third and fourth, you know, you'd have stuff. Or typically, if you just, we could push it, did we do it in one night last year or two?
We can do two, we can do, it was like four hours, and, you know, up to three or four hour, you know, it's just, I'm telling you.
It's just a matter of how much you guys want to do, because you pretty much got, and let, you know, you're typically, you've got, your Fridays are out. You know, so, and then possibly, more than likely, going to have Tuesday or Wednesday out next week. So that's going to leave Thurs, am I right? No, it's going to leave, you've got Tuesday or Thursday.
The week of the eighth through the twelfth, is that?
Wednesday.
So besides the eleventh.
Third or fourth.
Third or fourth, so if you only have one of those days, that's going to free up either the second and one of those days, that if you wanted to do it next week, which that would be three meetings in one week, that's too much.
I should put it on the third, I put it on my calendar, at five.
Possibly the third or fourth is the joint meeting.
I know, I got a CBB meeting that morning, but at five o'clock or something, I thought it was.
I was thinking like the ninth and tenth.
Yeah, ninth, tenth, or tenth, eleventh, or whatever, yeah, somewhere, because we're in the eleventh, the first reading, so if we just do boom, boom, boom.
I didn't know how much you got.
Is that okay?
Ninth, tenth, eleventh, it's all going to be fresh, you'll have it all in one day, but that's three meetings. That's three meetings in one day, in one week, so that's why I was like, do you want to split it up and do? The other thing would be to do, do two next week, where you'd have your.
Kelly sent me the email.
So you'd have two next week, so if you did the city and one day of department head meetings, you'd have two next week. And then the following week, you'd have two the next week. That's what I was kind of thinking, wherever, you wouldn't have three.
And the following week, three days worth of budget for eight hours.
So you can either do one, three, and three, or you're going to, you can do two, two and three, so whatever you guys want to do.
I just think we need to go ahead and get that, so that she can get something else in the chart, and they can pick their twenty-minute sections or fifteen-minute time.
Two, two, three.
Two and three?
Okay, was there any?
So do you want to do the second, since you don't know if you're going to have the second, the third, or the fourth?
It's a day after Labor Day.
Oh, or do you want to do?
Or you'll be rested.
Or if you go ahead and pencil in the city meeting for the third, and then do the department head on the fourth. If you go ahead and pencil in the city, the joint meeting with the commissioners and city council on the third.
Assuming they can do it.
Assuming they can do it, I said pencil it in, and then do the department head on the fourth.
And then the tenth and eleventh?
And then tenth and eleventh, or ninth and eleventh, however you want, whatever day works. You guys tell me, sorry, I'll send you.
Does everybody have their schedule?
Pretty much.
Okay.
Brad, what are you? Well, it's normally.
What?
So department head is on the fourth at what time?
I'll try to, I'll make it work.
Typically, we, last, last year we started them at four, but that's whether you guys can do them or not, or if you want to do, it's up to you guys, whatever you guys want.
The four is like when they get off work, so then they can just start, you don't have to leave.
Of course, I always going to want that four o'clock, so it's going to be.
We'll draw it down the hat. No favorites here. So you think, you're thinking the third for the Tell City Council?
I just know you wanted Steve there, and then also with the scheduling of this room, it's going to be easier.
Tell City Council, five o'clock on the third. And then the fourth, we can do the department head starting at four. Worst case, we can flip a room.
He'll be here?
No, that's.
The Tell City Council on the third will be here.
Yeah.
Courthouse on the fourth.
So the worst case, the commissioners come in and say, we can only do the fourth, then we'll just flip-flop these two.
The third's going to be here, right?
Right.
And then the fourth at courthouse.
Yeah, the third at five, and it's here, it's the Tell City big joint meeting. And then department head will be the fourth at four o'clock at courthouse.
Four o'clock.
And Chris is going to schedule.
I'll send all this out to you guys.
Yeah.
And then the next week will be Wednesday, the tenth, at the courthouse at four o'clock.
Why is it courthouse?
Because we're already there.
So much department head.
Department head again, yeah. And then the eleventh would be Thursday at courthouse. At courthouse, at what time is that? At five, and that is the first reading.
Public hearing.
And outside agency.
Public hearing, outside agencies, okay, you'll send all this, right?
I will. I'll confirm with the commissioners ASAP. I just haven't heard back from them.
Okay, well, you just sent it today.
Yeah, I just sent it today.
And then we'll have our budget session sixteen, seventeenth, and eighteenth. So it's just really important that you take time to go through before the department heads, each one of these, and get your questions wrote down for them. It's a lot of work, but I think if we get it out of the way early, it'll be easier. The last thing I have is, yeah, take a look at each budget sheet, see what can be cut, this isn't, and this is something I want to put out there. You know, this, we're not, this, this isn't unique to us, the statewide government made cuts to the budgets, and I think it's important that people understand they did that to give property tax relief to the taxpayer. And they asked, when they did that, of course, it affects all local units, but they asked that we also look within our budget and cut fluff and try to get as efficient as possible. I really, as much, as painful as it is, I don't think it's a bad thing. I don't think, you know, that the forced efficiency or whatever is, you know, we should be mad at this state for that. I hear a lot of comments that it's all their fault. be mad at this state for that, I hear a lot of comments that it's all their fault, shame on them, and they're making us do this, and I, I just think that's the wrong approach, that's just me personally, but I am happy that the people, the taxpayers are going to get a property tax break for the next couple of years, and we're just going to have to do our part to get leave, and so. But there, there is light at the end of the tunnel, after this, two thousand twenty-six is going to start getting a little better, and then two thousand twenty-eight, significantly better for the counties.
And calling it chaos is not constructive.
It is not chaos, yeah. It's not constructive at all, all of that unnecessary drama is not constructive.
Our tax modification would have been very beneficial for this also.
It would have been, um, but that didn't happen, uh, but hopefully, unless legislation changes by twenty-eight, we will basically have what we wanted with the tax modification anyways, because we won't have to split the income pie, the income tax pie, and we'll be able to properly fund all of our services the way we wanted to with the tax modification, so.
And with no tax increase.
With no tax increase, yeah, so, anyways, uh, it's, you know, it's difficult, I understand that, um, but I also understand the point of what legislature did, so. I appreciate everybody's time, does anyone have anything else?
No.
Okay.
A motion to adjourn.
We don't have to motion, okay.
Sure, okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for your time, and we'll see you next week.
Thank you, Gail.
Yeah, no problem.
Well, that means, Sam, come on, let's put on record, thank you, mate.
Thanks, I guess.
Good job, Chris.
Thank you, Gail.
I'm going to check these numbers, but we'll make sure.